We are live.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the September 23rd meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Georgetown. And we're going to begin this evening with a moment of silence in memory of residents who recently passed away. Olly Jaeger has served the community for many years in a number of capacities. Until the end of his life, he worked with the Solid Waste Committee at the transfer station. Jim Pepenbrink was a newer member of the town, retired recently, joined the fire department, was an active volunteer there, and his death was very sudden. We will miss him. And Nicole Nehoff, I think most of you have learned of her tragic death at an apartment fire in Portland. She was the kindergarten teacher at our central school. So we'll spend a moment of silence respecting and being grateful for them. And with that, we move on to the regular business of the town. I have no items to add to the agenda. Is there any public comment?
No.
I can't see any?
Not from here.
There's none in the room.
Okay. I don't see any on the screen, but I'm not seeing everyone at once. Let's see.
One thing I'd add, Bronwyn, I do have the appointment certificates as well as a CMP pole permit placement, which is doesn't require a vote, just items to be signed that I inadvertently left off the agenda under items to be signed.
Okay.
They are here.
We will sign them when the time comes. Minutes of August 26th, are there any additions or corrections?
No, I move to approve the August, both sets of minutes, the August 26th meeting minutes and the September minutes as well.
September the 9th, okay. Is there a second?
I will second.
All those in favor?
Perfect.
Tyler, you want to jump through reviews?
Just briefly, I'll mention that Mary had sent along the August financials. She'd also sent along the year-end 2024 audit. And periodically, we include and send along digitally to the board an updated permit listing that just gives folks an idea of where permits are at at this point in the year. We finalize a final list that gets published to the website. And periodically through the year, we like to keep this board updated, not just the planning board.
Great, okay.
And is there any, any questions about correspondence as listed or comments on the contents thereof? Okay. Receipts for pumping? There aren't any main waste discharge license? That area seems to be pretty blank, Tyler. No comment?
That area is pretty blank. We did get a new application that came in today for a main waste discharge license, and that'll be on the next agenda, just because it came in after this one was sent out.
Okay. Well, unless I've missed something, we're up to board member and committee updates. I have a confession, first of all. I missed both of my committee meetings inadvertently. Well, one was my mistake, and the other was a typo, you might say. But in any case, Solid Waste met the other night, and the TOPMB did meet. And I have no idea what they talked about, but we'll find out in their minutes. The Solid Waste Committee talked again about increasing number of intrusions after hours. They got a price on an automatic gate, and it's quite expensive. So I don't think, at least the committee won't be recommending that in the near future. Tyler and I met with Jim Coombs earlier in the week, and we talked about traffic problems at the transfer station and problems with overloading of the compactor on recent weekends. They've had to shut it down early, a couple of Sundays in a row. One of the things that we batted around, and I don't know that it was thoroughly discussed at the committee meeting, was the idea of being open an additional day, not additional hours as had been suggested by someone at one of these meetings, but an extra day, and perhaps designating that day as a day specifically for seniors and year-round residents to make use of the transfer station. So you may hear more about that in the future. We also met with Bob Trabon to talk about personnel on the Financial Advisory Committee and the makeup of the planning board and alternates to the planning board. And that would be my update, and I think it's still before 6:15 if somebody else has updates.
Sure, I can go. The Rec Committee met before the fall frolic, and it was primarily to ensure that the fall frolic and any support they could give to the art show, which happened at the same time, both very successful. At least, it seemed when you were there experiencing it. So those occurred on September 20th. Next Rec Committee meeting is October 7, which is a hybrid meeting. The School Committee met on the 17th. And I stood in for Katie on that because Katie was double booked, and I don't think any of my other committees have met. So that's it for my report.
And for me, I had the School Committee on Wednesday, which is at 5, and the Planning Board, which is at 7. Aria stepped in for me at the School Committee. Thank you very much. The Planning Board, I was hoping to get to, but ended up being, I was cutting it too tight with my current job, which has me working in the evenings, so unable to make it to the Planning Board, but I did get their minutes. They have a short-term rental special meeting happening this Thursday at 1:00. And yeah, that's all I have for now.
Okay, great timing, guys. We're declaring it to be 6:15, and we will declare open a public hearing on the general assistance ordinance revisions that are coming to us from the Department of Health and Human Services. And following that hearing, take any appropriate action. So the public hearing is open. Is there public comment?
And I see Mary is on, Bronwyn, so I know Mary had a couple of comments.
Good. Mary?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi. As most know, but since Katie knew, I just kind of wanted to go over it quickly. The state of Maine, usually beginning of September or so, Department of Health and Human Services issues a maximum, you know, for general assistance, which goes over heating and housing and food and electricity and things like that. So this year, and those are effective October 1st through September 30. So we, as a municipality and those that have councils, you know, the council adopts so that we can use those maximums when general assistance applicants come in. This year, they have increased the overall maximum for a family of five by $300. As far as the food maximums are concerned, a family of eight, a total household of eight folks has gone up $33. So you know, pretty much these these maximums are minimums as far as you and I are concerned. But again, these are what we utilize when folks come in to apply for general assistance. And we are required as a municipality to adopt them. We are able to adopt our own outside of these, but we usually choose to go with the state of Maine ones, which allows us to get our 70% reimbursement from them, assuming that we've done, you know, all the paperwork correctly and all of that. So yes, the overall maximum went up, like I said, $316. And that's, you know, about it.
Mary, could you just summarize for us who these programs apply to? Do we, how many, how often do we have applicants? What is the general situation that brings them to ask for general assistance, to need general assistance?
Well, anyone can apply for general assistance. As we said, the guidelines are pretty strict as far as income goes. You know, the incomes are pretty low. Anyone could come to ask for help, loss of a job, new to town and don't have a job yet. You know, there's a number of reasons that people can come. And everyone is, you know, able to fill out an application, whether or not they are, you know, they meet the guidelines. That's always the problem. But anyone, anyone can apply. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, dear.
The end of the year, I guess September 30, you add it all up, the town covers 30% and the state refunds 70%?
Yes, every month, well, every month or two, depending upon we have any applications, we submit to the state what we have spent, how many cases we've had, how many applicants we've had, how many we've actually issued and approved, and those dollar amounts. And then we separate it between whether or not it's an emergency or whether or not it is just a normal general assistance application. An emergency could, for me, I often, well, if it's an emergency, it usually involves having children in the home in which, you know, we need to get heating there fast or something. And an emergency, you know, is sometimes, you know, the state, I think, considers it, we're not, it would be life-threatening if we weren't, you know, giving it to them. I think last year, we had a total of four cases. A couple of them were, came in more than once, but I think in total, four cases, where different households applying. And I also want to point out that the Community Center does a real good job with helping with heat. And as far, they also have a bunch of gift certificates available, and folks know that. Really, someone just has to come into the town office and mention to me that, you know, I think Suzie might need some help with food. And Suzie will get a gift card in the mail. You know, that's kind of how, you know, which is not, which is not general assistance and not part of our reimbursement. Yeah.
And not town, and not town funds either.
Correct, and not town funds either, no. The Community Center fundraises for it, and we have a donor that is a consistent donor yearly that supplies us with $7,500, and it's wonderful.
Great. So I should also point out that we have to designate a general assistance director every year for the town, and Mary has taken that role and goes to training for it, which is not always simple, and implements it and keeps all the records back at the town office. Aria, you had your hand up?
Yes. Mary, what was the amount you said our consistent donor donates every year, please?
She donates to the Community Center $7,500.
On an annual basis?
Has been, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just didn't hear the amount. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, yeah. And we use that for food. We often do our food baskets with that and fuel for anyone that needs it. Yeah.
Tyler, you had your hand up?
Yep. And just the comment that I'd add in, just to bring it home a little bit too, is that because of how low these maximums are, the Community Center really does, in a lot of cases, make up the difference. The state has this very high or low bar, depending which way you're looking at it, but thankfully Georgetown is able to continue to help residents.
And Tyler, I would assume gleaning is also filling a need in that regard too, and they're working with the Community Center and the town. So thanks to all of our gleaning, yeah, thanks to all of our gleaning volunteers as well as the Community Center for helping to supplement our GA program.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any further comment? Mary, did you want to say anything else?
The one other thing that I will say is, in the fiscal year 2024-25, which we just ended, we spent $8,600 in general assistance, so.
Okay, is there any further comment from the public? Hearing none? I will close the hearing. I don't have to have a vote to do that, do I, Tyler?
You have that power, Madam Chair.
Oh, such, and it goes right to your head. So we'll close the hearing. Would you like to act on this? We have to adopt these maximums or not. Do something about that. Would you like to do that now, folks?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the rates recommended by our finance director.
I'll second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Everybody in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, Tyler, it's about 20 after. It's up to you where we go from here.
You know, if I can jump in, I had one, the Conservation Committee also on September 13. I neglected to talk about coastal cleanup, but that seemed to be pretty successful. So thank you all for, in the community, for engaging in the coastal cleanup and for all of our conservation and community volunteers who participated in that and helped out at the transfer station. Thanks.
Thank you, Aria. Okay, Tyler.
I would say at this stage, normally it'd be me, but if we want to give Brian the chance, he can get to the training.
I think that would be fine. So would you introduce Mark? Oh, Brian. Oh, I see, Brian Whalen, the fire director, Fire Chief update. Okay, I see it. Okay, Brian, go for it.
He might be busy. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, sorry, I'm getting unmuted here and trying to... Sorry, sorry about that.
Okay.
All good.
Quick Fire Department update tonight. So as you guys mentioned earlier tonight, thank you very much for the moment for Jim Pipenbrink. He unfortunately suddenly passed away last week, and it's been a big loss for the department, and I really appreciate that, and the entire community reaching out with that. So thank you very much for the moment of silence. It was really nice. So along that personnel line, I have talked or been in contact with at least one person out in the community who is looking to join the department here coming up. And I've heard of another person who has expressed interest, but I haven't made contact with them yet. So working on reaching out to these folks, see if it'll work out for everybody on both sides, and looking forward to meeting these guys here soon. So we got that. Other than that, personnel is kind of status quo, and just kind of keep going like we're going. Getting everybody trained up, all the new folks still. Yeah, kind of business as usual there. So all of our vehicles are in service at this point. We've got an internal committee looking at requirements for purchasing a new ambulance. We're looking to do that probably in the next year or two. So we're looking at internal requirements for those kinds of things, big number prices, timeline, ordering new ones, if that's what we're going to do, that kind of thing. Hoping to get some information gathered here in the next couple of months prior to the next budget season. So, you know, we'll see how that's all going to work out when we have more information. But so we're looking into that right now. Got a couple of small repairs going on at the station, nothing major, just minor upkeep kind of things. We're continuing with our training schedule. We're looking to get up to Bath next month to use the training site up at Bath for some live fire training. That's always well-attended, and we usually partner up with Rousick and Woolwich, maybe West Bath too. And we all kind of join up together and conduct this live fire training. So hugely beneficial for our folks because we don't do it that often, which is great. Very happy we don't do that very much here in town. But because we don't do it a lot in practice, in real life, then we're going to do it in practice. So we're looking to do that. Plus, I've heard, don't have any firm dates yet, but kind of Woolwich has an acquired structure that they might be inviting us up to train on, and there's nothing like training on the real thing, you know, doing all the things that we would do otherwise. So force pluntry, you know, roof ventilation, actually doing it on a real building. So Woolwich has a building, and Bath possibly has one also coming up that we'll be able to train on. So be reaching out to them and working with them to facilitate that for our benefits. So we appreciate, you know, working with these other local departments to keep our skills up as much as we can. Like you guys said, we got EMS training later tonight, so I'll be rushing off to go do that. And let's see, oh, we received a donation from a community member for purchase of an AED for the Community Center. So I'll be reaching out to make that all official and try to figure out where we're going to have that, you know, put in and whatnot. So very excited about that. And just wanted to mention that the Georgetown Fire Department Auxiliary will be hosting the spaghetti supper, their annual spaghetti supper on October 4th coming up here in just a few weeks. So everyone wants to come out, have some spaghetti, and join the Fire Department for a little bit of fundraiser, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I'm good.
Thank you, Chief Whalen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so it must be time. Well, is it time for our scheduled appointment, Tyler?
No.
Or is it time for you? Okay.
I will talk, and I know between Mary and I, it'll be that time for Mr. Himba in a moment. For the town clerk on my administrator update, Angie's asked that I share that absentee voting requests are now underway for the election this November, and that in-person voting, absentee voting at the town office and being able to just come get your absentee ballots will happen in early October. The date is to be determined. It depends on when ballots get in here to the office, but that is coming right up. I also wanted to note that on October 8th, there's been a request from Angie to have Kathy go along to the MMA convention, which would have us close the office that day for professional development. I do think some of those classes would really benefit both of them, given that they're new in that role.
I agree.
Thank you, Aria. So, and I know that the Town of Woolwich is closing up just for the one day, not both days, to do the same thing. They found that that Wednesday has the better options for some of their staff as well. On October 2nd, I just wanted to note that I'll need to leave a little bit early that day. I've been asked to speak to a political science class at UMF about what it's like working in municipal government, and so I thought that'd be a great day to go see my old professor. Patent Free Library will be changing, is considering changing the way its board is organized to allow for each member municipality to have a permanent representative. That change has not happened yet, but should that happen, we would be asked to name someone from Georgetown. So Peggy Kapiewski's asked that I share this message, and I wanted to make sure it got to the board. I wanted to share that last week, I attended a Saginaw County Commissioners' meeting where there is continuing ongoing discussions about multiple tax installment payments. We've talked about it a few times. As of now, two municipalities in all Saginaw County want to stick with one payment, and the Commissioners are trying to find a way to make it fair and equitable to everyone, acknowledging that eight-member municipalities want to make it two. I also, last week, attended a meeting in Arousik at the town office with DOT, and they are going to be working on three to five years out. The point up at Arousik where it floods quite often, the state is now actively looking into raising the road, which there are a lot of questions on whether or not it will be raised and widened, or if there are guardrails. They're pre-public comment phase, but it is something, because it affects both Georgetown and Arousik, I will keep my eyes on, and the Road Commissioner attended that as well. But I do know back in the January storms, there was a period of time where we weren't able to get mutual aid to Georgetown because of that flooding. So it is nice to know that it's at least being acknowledged a few years out. Some very last things, I wanted to mention that the Bath Print Shop has gotten me the final proof of our town report. Mary and I are actively reviewing that now. We've caught a couple of minor tweaks that need to be made. But in talking with Ash at Bath Print Shop, if we get a final blessing to them by Thursday, we should have the reports within one week to two weeks. They're going to give them in 100 copy installments. So we'll be able to get some sooner and have some demand when the rest come in. I also wanted to check in with the board just very briefly. Historically, with tax bills, we've included an insert that has a lot of relevant information, when town meeting is, holiday office closures, et cetera. Is that something the board would like us to go along with? We've done it two years in a row now.
I think it makes great sense.
I do too.
Perfect. So I will get in touch with the Solid Waste Committee to see if they have their holidays discussion yet, and we'll go from there. And lastly, Mike, or two last things. Mike Field has been working in consultation with the forester relative to that tree cutting on the Ipkar Preserve, and they have not been able to get an arborist to come down. Apparently, arborists, or not arborists, foresters are pretty short-staffed right now, but we are working to get that. And lastly, as many of you are probably aware, the Charles Pond Culvert Project is now underway. There will be some traffic impacts if you're headed past there for a couple of days, but we're very excited that we're finally using up the last of our ARPA funds and can close that out. A lot of information. Were there any questions? Because I realize I went pretty quick.
Do we need to vote on closing the office October 8th for the MMA convention?
We don't need to, but I don't think it would hurt.
Are we all, I'm certainly in favor.
I am too. Yeah, I am too.
So you have our blessing. You can have the vote if you want it.
Six of one. So do we want to make it a vote so it's official?
I move to close the town office on October 8th to allow professional development, both for our town clerk and our deputy town clerk.
And our town administrator is also going up that day, I think?
That's right. Well, you were already on that docket, weren't you?
Yeah, he was.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Everybody in favor?
Rita, perfect. And I believe, Bronwyn, that Mr. Himba, if I'm pronouncing that right, just Himba, I'll get it right next time, is here, and it's 6:30, so for what that's worth.
Bring him on to the table.
Yeah, while he's coming up, please, please do thank the Town Report Committee again for all their work to bring this to a closure, including your efforts in that regard.
I definitely will get those thanks out, Aria, and absolutely, it took a village.
Sure. Do you want me to go and talk?
It's the alley. We'll follow you.
All right, all right. It's like the Mona Lisa?
Yeah.
All right. How are you?
Good, how are you?
So my name is Mark, a community navigator for Saginaw County. I work under the Emergency Management Agency. I'm not really trained, like, you know Phillip over there? I'm not really trained like the director or anything like that. I just happen to follow under EMA. The Board of Health of Saginaw County and the county started this position. It's kind of been in the works since February, January, February, I think. I was hired about five weeks ago. My position is funded by opioid settlement funds, so no county money. It's funded for at least five years. So what I do is I help people access state and local resources, benefits, assistance programs. I'm kind of like 2-on-1, only really hands-on. So I just like to get to know how these programs work, and so I can speak intelligently to residents about. I just like to get to know how these programs work and so I can speak intelligently to residents about them. Kind of let them know if they're appropriate for them or not and. You know. Help with applications if I need to do that. So when someone comes to me for the first time. I haven't signed a release of information that gives me permission to assist them. And to use their information with other agencies or make calls on their behalf to C N P or whoever. I do a whole intake. I've got a bunch of questions on there. Usually someone comes to me with one need like. Coming up, it's gonna be heat assistance and C N P help. So. You know, I kind of help them navigate that, but I I want to do a full intake so I can. Just kind of poke and prod a little bit and find out what else they might need. Cause there's always, there's always more. Some. The families have. You know, they sacrificed some of their immediate needs like food or something so they can pay rent this month. So there's always, there's always more. So. I get referrals from town offices. School counselors. I don't know. I don't know. We're all getting, uh, police and fire. Two on one. I guess my pitch to you, who is, who does? General assistance.
So our general assistance coordinator is on Zoom. Her camera's currently off, but she's actually right next door, just has a cold.
Okay.
And Brahman Tudor is the chair of our select board and Aria E is also a select board member.
Gotcha.
And Mary up in the corner. Mary, do you want to lower your camera just a little bit so we can see you? The painting is beautiful though.
Yeah, there we go.
Our general assistance coordinator.
Okay. Okay. So my pitch to you is to send all of your residents, all of your applicants to me. So I can. Kind of lead them through finding other potential resources and. You know, we want to help them exhaust other local and state resources. So so. General assistance is really the last resort for them. So maybe we can help towns save a little money that way. I've got a helpline that I monitor. I mean, I've got it with me twenty-four seven, seven days a week. You know, I answer it weekdays when I'm in the office. But I'm always kind of watching it. Cause if, you know, if there's. If there's some kind of emergency comes through, I will. Try to help them connect with a town general assistance person or. I don't exactly do emergencies or crises like. Like the police or A M Ts would. You know, there's nothing I can do on scene, but I will come in immediately after and help. Like if the family is getting out of the hospital and. They need help getting back on their feet or catching up on bills. That's where I come in. I want to, I want to capture those people. We cover all of Sagatoh County. We're kind of, we're kind of. Grouped in with Brunswick. So we get to use a lot of Brunswick is a really good resource hub. So we get to use a lot of those resources, but. I gotta draw the line there at topsom Brunswick. Cause we're, we're. We're a county program. I think that's, I think that's it. I'm not. I should clarify that I'm not case manager. I'm not licensed like that, but I'm pretty close. You know, I want to. I want to help people get to resources and I want to know their successes. So I do lots of checks, check ins. Yeah. I want to empower people to be self sustaining though. So. I don't want to just hand them a piece of paper with a whole bunch of phone numbers. I want to give them a couple of things at a time. That are kind of tailored to their situation. Let them go try those things and. I want to know their success on those. And if not, they can come back, we can try a different route. Any questions on, on what I'm doing here?
How long have you been? How long has there been this position? How long has it existed?
I started on August twenty fifth. I previously did this in Lincoln County. That position, which was kind of county funded, was at the Y M C A. So I did that for about nineteen months. And yeah, this position opened up and I thought it was a really great chance to start it up over here.
So basically it's, it's a new, it's a new program.
It's a new program, yeah.
To coordinate these other programs.
Yeah. So I've spent the last five weeks trying to familiarize myself with the, with the very local resources. A lot of the things, I brought all of my lists of resources from Lincoln County. And, and you know, a lot of them are regional, but. I've, I'm just trying to fill in the gaps on the, on the very local resources, the things that the towns have and. Yeah.
Mark, is it, is it your intent to? To get the group of Sagatoh County G A administrators together to go over? Your schedule or your plan or your thoughts or? I mean, I understand that you're gonna, you're gonna come in ideally and, and. Help, help some of these general assistance applicants get off the rolls. Which is, which is commendable and wonderful, but. I'm just, you know, I just want to see how that's. You know.
I wouldn't mind getting all together. I. That'd be difficult. Getting everybody in a room. I would be happy to do that. Also, I'm going on Friday to do the. Basics of G A workshop. With main municipal, so I can get a real handle on this. I mean, I kind of know. What's going on with G A, but I really, I would really like to. Help people, you know, a lot of people are frustrated because they, they. It's a really tight window, right? For, for G A qualification. So I want to be able to kind of. Kind of help them through that when they don't qualify. I want to be able to talk, talk about it better. But yeah, if you. I'd love to get together with all the G A, the G A admins for sure. Right now I'm going, I'm going, I did arouse that last night, Georgetown tonight. I'm just trying to hit all the select board meetings. And then meet with the G, the G A admins and. Yeah.
And just for one thing that it's worth, I do know that in Sagatoh at least. The managers periodically get together. I know town clerks around election time. Oftentimes they'll get together. So I imagine some of the G A administrators to Mary's point. Might not mind a lunchtime meeting or a time to just. Get themselves together and network too. So just for what that's worth.
I would love to, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Or, or even a webinar. Y'all could have a lunchtime webinar.
Right.
That might be easier. Yeah, yeah.
And Mark, are you leaving cards behind or anything for us to pass, for me to pass out to?
Yep, I'll leave cards. I'll leave my flyers. I'm also gonna leave a stack in my release, release of information forms. Cause that, that's kind of the first step for residents. And if, if they walk into your office, that's, that's easy to do for them and. Yeah.
Wonderful. Good.
Yeah, and. You know, I know how it worked in Lincoln County, but it's all, it's all. Different now and I'm trying to figure out what this position should be and I want you to let me know. If there's someplace you think I should go or a group that I should get into. Send me an email with the Zoom link or whatever. You're not spamming me. Just send me anything you want.
Mm hmm. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Mark. And we, we have a resource that you should know about here as well. The age friendly network. So that might be a good one for you to be aware of. So thank you for coming tonight and, and talking with us.
Do you have a town specific one or are you part of lower Kennebec age friendly or?
Both.
Do you both?
We have Georgetown age friendly which participates in the lower Kennebec.
Okay. Well, then I'd love to get, get with that.
So Tyler, any one of us could give you that contact information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for thinking of us. Yeah, yeah. Get down here, spend more time. We can do some things over there.
We just adopted the new G A maximum. So it's a great themed evening of discussion.
Yes.
It's true. Like you planned it.
I was just reading that today. So good.
And I think Mary's up next for her update, Brahman.
Okay.
Okay. Hello again.
Now that we can see you for real. We were, we were looking at your glasses.
I'm sorry. I had no idea. Okay, so. It's been a while since I've been to one of your meetings. So thank you for having me. As you know, I, I, we finally received on September sixteenth, our. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four final audit, which was lovely to get done. Obviously I've done a lot of work in planning and preparation for this next coming audit. Um, which we haven't scheduled yet. But I'm still continuing to do that work and I'll be uploading all to their files. We, we go through and I, we did a bunch of the planning paperwork. And then once all that planning paperwork is done, then they'll, they'll schedule the audit. They wanted to schedule actually for. This last week, but due to some, some issues, I wasn't able to do that. So I'm on the on call. So once I get some issues taken care of, we'll get that scheduled. As you know, I sent out to you the August thirty first financials. Not a whole lot going on there at this point. So if you have any questions on that stuff, please give me a holler. In, in your. I think probably under your new business. I'd like to, to reach out to Bath Savings again. For a tax anticipation note. Just to protect us should we need it. In the amount, just like last year, pretty much not to exceed five hundred thousand. We probably use a. Uh, March thirty-one end date. Which means we'll, we'll pay all of that back by March thirty-first. And again, we don't necessarily need to draw on it, but we just need to be ready. Should something happen? Should the tax bills be late? Should folks, you know, nobody pay? That doesn't happen, but you know, we try to look at all, all eventualities. So in your, in your new business, there's, there's gonna be a request from me to authorize that. You know, shopping for that tea or, or getting that tan. You've already done the G A appendices. And then today we sent out the thirty day notices. For tax liens. Right around October twenty-third, the taxes, the last year's tax commitment. Will go to lean. We sent notices out today to thirty-eight properties. Last year we had twenty-eight that went to lean. I think that a lot of the, and, and of the, of the thirty-eight that we sent out. I think probably. A good fifteen or so will take care of those before that October twenty-third deadline. As some of you may have noticed on the last warrant, we have started the snowplow contract payments for this fiscal year, believe it or not.
Do not say that, Mary.
I know. The first one is due in September, so we have done that. And then the other, the, my final thing is. We have a parcel that was actually. Tax acquired in, in foreclosure because of lack of paying taxes. And that was the Robin Weiner property up on one twenty-seven. In between the, the turtle and Gene Reynolds place. That was the one that in twenty sixteen, it was a shoreline zoning violation, a tree cutting violation. So the, the new. Miss, Miss Weiner had passed away. It took a couple of years. Excuse me, for the law, the lawyers to find the co. Successor trustees, which they've done. They came down and have already paid all of the taxes off on the property. And now I went through. Part of the shoreline zoning violation. Was a penalty for twelve thousand dollars, which they'd paid five, uh, seven thousand dollars. Back in twenty seventeen as required. Leaving a balance of five thousand dollars. That has to be paid prior to the property transferring. So it was five thousand dollars plus interest. So. I've been in touch with these folks to let them know. This is where the, where it stands right now. And I just sent that off to them this week. And that, that property will likely be hitting the market soon. So. And I think that was it for me. So.
Great. Any, any questions, guys?
No, thank you, Mary. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you as always for keeping track of us. Over the years.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess we're up to old business or are you, did you have more Tyler and your report?
I did not. And I, I just note on that first item of old business, Brahman, we don't need a vote to accept the resignation. But we would need a vote on the next item for the appointment.
Okay.
I move to.
However, whoa, 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 this is wrong, Tyler. Bill Webster is. Resigning from as an alternate to the planning board. And he would like to be appointed.
To the board of appeals.
To the Board of Appeals to fill the vacancy that exists there due to Ole's death.
That's correct on here. On my minutes, that's correct.
Okay, I must have the old version. I didn't print. I didn't print the new one. Okay.
Yeah.
So what I'm missing is that. He's resigning from the. He's made it official. To resign from the, as an alternate to the planning board. And has expressed interest in being appointed to the Board of Appeals. And if you're willing to do that tonight, that would require a motion and a vote. He does have. Experience as a former member of the. Planning board. And he is anxious to serve in a position that does not require monthly meetings. So the. Board of Appeals seems pretty ideal for that situation.
And so I'll. I'll move to appoint. Bill Webster to the Board of Appeals.
I would second the motion.
Okay.
I would just, I would just ask, as I, I'm interrupting, could we? Quantify that motion to fill the unexpired term from only expiring in twenty twenty-seven?
Yes, that would be perfect.
Oh, yes, that a- as amended, that is my motion. Thank you, Tyler.
And. As we recommend to anyone. Joining either of these committees. It's helpful if they complete the MMA training program for those boards. I imagine Bill has already done it, but it would have been a number of years ago.
And, and I'll just note again, Ole's dedicated service on the Board of Appeals for many years. So I'm, I'm happy that Bill is interested in and. That's great.
Okay, so we need a vote. The motion has been made and seconded. To appoint Bill Webster, the Board of Appeals to fill the vacancy. Always unexpired term. All those in favor?
Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. And Tyler also circulated, when, when we spoke with Bob Trebona, we talked about. The fact that there is no provision for alternates to the Financial Advisory Committee. And. The advantage of alternates is that they allow you to. Proceed if somebody is. Of your regular voting members is not able to be present. And also if somebody on that committee has to choose themselves for a particular. Vote or issue. And he agreed that it would be. A good training situation to have, to create a position. An alternate position for the financial F A C. So in, in that. Context. He's asking us to re, reappoint Julie Panki and Lisa Sabatine. As full members of the F A C. But to move forward with also with creating an alternate position. So is there a motion about reappointment?
Is it two alternate positions or just the one?
It would be creating up to two alternate. And I can speak a little bit more about that when we get to that item.
And Bob is, Bob is also here, so he can, he can weigh in. But if we could, the reappointments are really a separate issue. I, I mushed it all up together, but. It's basically a, a separate issue.
So I'll move to, I'll, I'll move that we reappoint Lisa Sabatine and Julie Panki to the F A C.
I second.
With three-year terms. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're into new business and let's move to the propose, we'll skip designation of the MMA voting person for the month and just go right ahead with the FAC discussion. So, um.
I think it's important to have the two alternates, and I think it's important also uh, to your comment, Bronwyn, um, some years ago, before I was even on the select board, um, to encourage, a- and we've been talking about this, you know, across multiple meetings over the last year to encourage other residents. We have a lot of, uh, people resources here um, with our community, and there are other residents that have financial backgrounds. We've met them, we've talked to them, and I'd like to make certain that our, that we make an outreach to those folks, you know, to, it's an outreach to the community. Um, so that everyone feels included in the application for volunteer work, uh, process here. So that would be my hope as part of this, um, uh, looking at each committee and the ability for alternates or to shore up committees so that it doesn't fall on the core, you know, four to six people in these committees, some of whom have, you know, mul- have one person across two or three committees in town.
Yeah. I think you're right.
Also, it's a, it's a good, it, it's important for new people to have an opportunity to learn the ropes and
Exactly.
to get a context for what they're being asked to do. And in that sense, I think that the alternate position is, is useful and helpful. Um, Bob, did you want to say anything else about this, uh, proposal?
Katie was gonna talk too.
The, the short answer is yes, and I'm trying to get my video up.
There you go. You two, we don't have, there we are, the whole, the mustache and everything. That's good.
Yes, I think you've pretty much covered everything in, in detail and, uh, I, I agree with everything that you said. We do need to have people in the waiting line, uh, to get trained up, to experience what's going on so that should somebody suddenly, suddenly leave, uh, they're ready to step in. And it goes for short-term, term as well as long-term. And, uh, we, when we're looking for people, uh, we should try and recruit younger people. We, we have a number of people in town that are very dedicated and working very hard and have done it for a long time and do a fine job. But, uh, they, they age out and we need to get younger people in to replace them.
You know, Bob, I think having, having the ability, you know, the FAC has a designated timeframe and having the ability, as I know that y'all do, to be flexible with hybrid meetings and those kinds of things, um, plays to, to the younger demographic who might be, you know, working till six or five and have families and these kinds of things. So I think those are important, um, points to keep in mind, and so I appreciate you doing that.
And my last comment is across the board to all committees.
Oh, about younger people?
Yes.
Oh, you wouldn't, but Bob, you get younger every time I see you.
Thank you. Some days I don't feel that way.
Oh, I know that. Um, okay, so board members, uh, Tyler, yes.
Uh, just, just for background, so the document that was circulated in your packet was the governing document of the FAC that was adopted by the Select Board in January of twenty-two. And it outlines very clearly where certain responsibilities fall to the Select Board, to the FAC, to the Finance Director. And the language that we circulated, uh, Bob has blessed. Initially, I'd said three alternates. Bob said two is the maximum and one would be preferred, and I told him I'd relay that at the meeting, so I just wanted it clear, but the language was blessed, and this is the document that governs FAC. Some committees have an ordinance, some have old warrant articles that constituted them. This is what we've got for FAC.
Yeah. This might be putting the cart before the horse, but do you have people in mind as an alternate or?
No.
No.
I don't believe so. It was, the discussion did not go around about that. It was more the uh, functional aspect of creating the position. And I think that we have, we have a vacancy on, on the Harbor Committee. Um, and Tyler may remind me about something else that we want to publicize. So we would publicize this along with that and describe the responsibilities and the attributes that we're looking for and invite people to come forward. Uh, we have a vacancy on the Solid Waste Committee now as well.
I, I think it's great to do outreach around this, and, and my preference would be to have two alternates, and then it just gives you a little bit more flexibility.
Well, I think the way it's written right now, it says up to, two, so that would, that leaves flexibility right with the, you know, in the moment. If you have two good options, you can go with that, but if you only have one, you can, you don't have to feel incomplete. Um, so do we have a motion to adopt the language that Tyler circulated? For the, to add to the FAC, uh, documents?
Hey, Katie, I can see it's right on your lips.
I gotta pull the paper over. So I move to adopt the revision for the Georgetown FAC, um, language, including alternates.
Second?
Does that work?
That works.
That works fine. Good. All those in favor? All right.
Well, that's perfect.
Now, voting member for the MMA Annual Business Meeting, Tyler, remind us that there's a slate, correct?
No, so that is for the officers annually at the MMA Convention, which is the day that we'll be in attending, the Wednesday. They have an annual business meeting that addresses internal bylaws. Quite frankly, it is a fifteen-minute meeting. There were very rarely any changes. The town can designate anybody to be the voting representative. The last two years, it's fallen on me and it's a
And you'll happen to be, you'll be there, right?
Yes.
Hmm. That has a lot in favor of it.
I'd move to appoint Tyler as our voting representative.
All right.
I would second that.
All righty, uh, uh, agreed.
I will make you proud with the one vote to adjourn.
Okay. Uh, and Mary needs authorization, uh, to, to shop around for and obtain a tax anticipation note not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, and I will make that motion.
And I'll second it?
All those in, is, is there discussion, questions? All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Tyler, tell us about the change of paper of record for advertising.
So historically, the town of Georgetown has advertised public hearings, et cetera, public notices that need to go out, shellfish, committee-related verbiage, et cetera, in the Times Record. Over the last few years, the Times Record has shifted from being a daily newspaper to a couple of days a week newspaper to a one day in the week and a weekend edition to now just a weekend edition newspaper. At the County Commissioners Meeting that I recently attended, the county made this change from the Times Record to the Press Herald. They're owned by the same parent company. Costs are not different, but it gives the town or the county in that case, a little more wiggle room on when they can get a notice in and not having to do the math problem of adding an extra seven days and delaying things. I just wanted to bring forward, uh, my thoughts of switching. The motion would be if the board is amenable to change our paper of record from the Times Record to the Press Herald. And then we're mirroring the county government as well, so folks aren't looking in a bunch of different newspapers for notices that honestly, years ago, the legislature considered doing away with paper notices and allowing online on your website. That got voted down, so there still is a statutory requirement to advertise in papers. This just gives more flexibility to the town office and more readership on those notices, if that makes sense.
And we need to specify where we're advertising?
Typically, yes. So we don't, we don't necessarily, the language that came from the MMA legal that I included in the packet said that, you know, it doesn't have a prescribed process, but they encourage a vote because then we can let the townspeople know in future, look in the Press Herald.
Okay.
So, and I just, after seeing the county do it, it just was one of those things that made sense that I wanted to bring to this board.
Okay.
I think it certainly makes sense to announce where you should look for official notices, official, uh, the, these are the kinds of advertisements where we might, um, be putting something out to bid um, at the, a, a work project, uh, the snowplow contract, the, um, uh, lobster business when it's up or announcing a job opening or something of that nature. What else, Tyler? Oh, here, a public hearing.
Pu- public hearings are the most frequent, and I know that during our recent liquor license public hearings, I had a considerable difficulty on the first one, even getting through to the right classifieds folks because the Times Record had shifted all of their classified advertising to the Sun Journal. And so it just, hearings are gonna be the items that come up the most, but you're raising a great point about when we put information out to bid, we want to get bids, not the person that happens to know to look in the Friday edition of the Times Record that week.
So that's what typically why you designate something as the paper of record. And that way, uh, if it's not there, then it doesn't exist. If it is there, then you, you prove that you've done it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So unless we have particular nostalgia for the prior existence of the Times Record, um, I, I think we should go ahead with this, and I move that we designate the Press Herald as the paper of record for the town of Georgetown.
I, I second it, and it's more, you know, we've got to be, uh, relevant to, um, you know, current circumstances. So I second it.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Um, so November eleventh happens to be a holiday. It's a day that the office is planning to be closed. Therefore, not a great day for Select Board meetings. And Tyler is recommending Wednesday, we just move it to Wednesday, the twelfth. Is that?
Yeah, so I'll be away. I will try to make it, but, um, yeah, so I think, I think it's fine to leave it on the, to move it to the twelfth. Um, but I would like to, as we approach that, if, if we don't need to have a meeting on November twelfth, and we can do it all like we did it in August in one meeting, then I, you know, I would like to keep that option open as well.
Tyler is thinking that we may be moving to commitment by then. Is, is that, how did, remind me what you, what you were talking about?
But so that's my thought is that my hope is that the mapping gets completed very quickly because we had a small amount of properties to be mapped for this year, which could bring in Bill Van Tynen sooner. And in theory, we may be able to commit taxes as soon as the, um, as soon as the second meeting in October. In the event that we hit any hiccups, the next regular Select Board meeting would have been the eleventh, which is why I was saying push towards the twelfth. That said, in talking with Mary, historically, the town has for a commitment called a special meeting as well, where that's the only item. So I think it would make sense to schedule a meeting to have it. And there is always the chance that we get together just before Thanksgiving and work around commitment. There's just a few balls in the air to narrow down exactly which meeting, though banks would really love to know. But I am thinking by November twelfth, we should be there.
Um, Katie, were you saying that the school board meets on the sixteenth? On the twelfth?
You know, I don't have it on my calendar for November.
They, they usually meet the third Wednesday of the month, as I recall.
Yes, that's what it was.
So let's look.
So that would be the nineteenth of November.
So there'd be a select, uh, planning board meeting on the twelfth, no?
I think it's the nineteenth as well.
Oh. I see.
So the twelfth is open.
Hmm.
And again, although I'm out of state, I would do my best to, I just, it's hard to know.
Are you still out on Thursday, the thirteenth?
Yes, I'll be back, I'll be back in state on the, I think it's the fifteenth. But again, you know, if we need to make it happen, I will adjust my, the, the schedule down there. And I'll do my best to, to be there. So, I, I don't make it a, I just wanted to say that, just to get it on the record, and, and I think if it works for the two of y'all, Tyler and Mary, then let's move forward with that plan, if that seems to be the best way to uh, proceed.
It's okay. What did, what did you say, Katie?
Um, I need to look at my November calendar to see if I, if the twelfth is an option for me. I'll be working until seven.
Oh.
On the twelfth.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
What about, uh, Thursday, the thirteenth? Is that the same?
That one I could do at six.
Let's go for Thursday, huh?
And then, Aria, you'd be away, but possibly joining remotely?
Yep, yep.
And if we're doing something that really needs all three of us and needs a lot of time, we can schedule a special meeting for it. I mean, if, if it turns out that that's the big commitment meeting.
Yeah, like I said, I'll do my best. I don't want to disrupt us advancing what we need to get done.
We want to get those tax bills out so the money can come in.
And so we've got less interest on that tan Mary's borrowing for.
That's absolutely right. That's what I'm thinking of as well.
Okay.
Well, it's over twenty-eighth.
But we're thinking, so there's a, is there a motion on the floor to reschedule that eleventh meeting to the thirteenth at six?
I'll make that motion. Yeah.
And, and I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Hope it works for you, Tyler.
Hey, it does now.
So unless there's, is there any further business to come before the board?
None.
Then is there a public comment?
I have one question about the earlier, uh, reference on the work that a Rousek might be doing for the area that floods. It's my understanding that that already has been done once. And that it's subsided, then is there any?
It is the deep, it is the Department of Transportation that is planning for five years into the future, that is talking about that dip.
And, and will it, do we understand whether it'll be a more of a permanent fix of the last one, which apparently just subsided, and if they do it the same way, that we could expect the same result?
W- we can top offline too, Dave, but I would just share that there was considerable discussion on the methods that may be used. It is still very early, recognizing things have previously settled. There has been talk about potentially raising the road almost nine feet, knowing it would then pack down about four and then be a lot more solid. But because it's a one access point, they're concerned about the level of having to raise up one half of the road, but not the other half to keep traffic. So it's a very complicated discussion, and thankfully, there will be a lot of in- informational sessions as it gets closer, and I will make sure you've got that date so you can ask.
You, you fielded the question. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? Hearing none, I would.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Tyler, Mary. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Tyler, Mary.
Good night.